I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The consent agenda. Does he change anything, taking things off?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded. Vote. Huckabee?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Okay. Remarks or inquiries from the audience not pertaining to anything on the agenda? Not you. You work here.
Hey, that's not you. You sit down. You're at the bottom. You're on the bottom. I get that a lot. No.
Yeah, look.
Oh, no, you're.
This is not pertaining to this.
Yeah, but they're on the bottom as staff and board remarks, and you're a staff member, so you'd speak at the bottom.
You're in the audience, but you're not part of the audience.
Oh, that's so confusing.
Yeah. So you'll be at the bottom.
Can you hear me now? Okay, alright. Alright, item number five, financial report for October by the city manager, please.
Okay, I'm just gonna briefly go over, can everybody hear me? Over October's, um, financials. For the sales tax, we made fifty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That is a point-five percent, um, decrease, increase, sorry, from last month. We made nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars in use tax. We're down eight percent, a little bit. Alcohol beverage tax, nine thousand two hundred and thirteen. We're up by twenty-seven percent from last month. Franchise taxes are the same, pretty much a couple of dollars here and there. Other revenue is lower, uh, this month. I think that's just because of all of the, um, purple wave stuff kinda stopped. Uh, miscellaneous fines, we have seven hundred and seventy dollars, so that's up from last month, seventy-three percent up from last month. Of course, our transfers stayed the same, our miscellaneous items, I believe we had, what did we have in October that we sold? We figured that out, but it's just some little things that we sold here and there. So, we're good on that. In our water revenue, um, we have sixty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-seven, so we're fourteen percent, uh, down from last year. Or last month, I'm sorry. Three thousand seven hundred and eighty-five in our, uh, rehab fee. Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand in our electric, we're down from last year. Um, and we have forty thousand three hundred and fifteen in the wind power revenue, also down from, I don't know why I keep saying last year, I apologize, last month. Um, our recycle revenue is down a little bit. Uh, the recycle center fees, pretty much the same. It's point-five percent less. Overall, we had, in revenue, in our general fund, we had two hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars, and our expenses were a hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and fourteen. So that left us positive eighty-nine thousand. In the MUA side, our revenue was four hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and nineteen, and our expenses were three hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-two, which left us in the positive of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven. Cash on hand, we have seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, seventy-two thousand dollars in outstanding checks. That does not include any of our CDs or our savings.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. The police report for October from Chief Taylor, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, hello.
Yeah, see, you don't even stand close.
I'm going to stand back here now. Um, the month of October, we had seventeen incident reports. Those, those involved burglary, um, driving under the influence, embezzlement, larcenies, there's a couple of larcenies, uh, other offenses that were non-traffic related, uh, trespassings, vandalism's, and some warrants that were served. Let's see here. Last month, we arrested three individuals, filed charges for four. And, we had two collisions, uh, one hit and run. We had four hundred and thirty calls for service. Last month, we had eight nine-one-one transfers, accident under known injury, two business alarms, one residential alarm, three bullos, ten disturbances, two domestic disputes, um, seven EMS-related calls, two extra patrols, one fight, no weapons, uh, two, four, six fire-related calls, twenty-one follow-ups, uh, a hundred and fifty-nine calls for information, two intoxicated people, one intruder, one larceny, one missing person, toys disturbance, uh, two reckless drivers, sixteen requests to speak to officers, stolen property, seven suspicious people, and eight suspicious motor vehicles, one threat of bodily harm. That was for the month of October.
Good job.
Thank you.
It's the season. Alright, the fire report from Chris, please.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Uh, November stayed pretty steady with us. Uh, we had five gas leak calls, two water, we helped with two water leaks, we had one vehicle fire, two helicopters, four motor vehicle accidents, four lift assists, two alarms, helped with one debris on the roadway, and one structure fire, for a total of twenty-two runs for the month of November.
Alright, thank you. Alright, code enforcement report, please.
Hello.
Hello.
Month of November is kinda slow.
You got to step back. I haven't found the right one yet.
We shut it off. There we go. Whatever you did, you got something. Thank you. Thank you.
On the animal control side, we had a total of twelve calls, one call went into after hours, issued one citation. I was also able to attend a free equine training. That month, learned a lot of information on horse-related calls and investigations. Code enforcement side issued a total of one warnings, three notices of nuisance, two notices of dilapidations, declared five properties for abatement, cleaned and mowed two properties, issued five permits, zero citations, took multiple complaints and phone calls. We did start one property demo by the city. We are now watching twenty-four properties, and me and Steve were also able to go to the code enforcement certification training and both passed, so now we're both approved by the state.
Got your honor, Dave. Thank you, sir. Alright, item number nine, discussion of possible action to approve resolution number twenty-two-four dash twelve oh five dash oh one, stating that the remainder of the ARPA funds to be used for the city and the MUA salaries expenses to be encumbered by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, and spent by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, um, Michael is here with Swoda, and he's gonna go over, uh, the ARPA information for the board. So he came down from Burn Flat?
Yeah.
To, uh, talk to y'all about it.
Alright, so ARPA funds, American Recovery Plan Act funds are required to be obligated in a public meeting prior to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. So, this is this meeting, I guess.
This is it.
The salary expenses that you list here would be perfectly acceptable for ARPA expenses. I know those will last a little while. But I would caution against using any for, uh, any of the pension payments. Would use that out of the regular either MUA or city funds. The act only disallows certain funds if you've done the revenue, uh, lost revenue declaration, which you guys did a couple of years back. Uh, and that's no legal judgment fees, no debt payments. I was gonna forget one if I didn't bring my list up here.
Can we verify it real quick?
Oh. Retirement contribution being the other one, and then the other one is that you must spend the money.
Okay.
So, you know, running it through to pay salaries, if you did a purchase order to the city from the ARPA fund into the MUA from the ARPA fund to pay those, that would work out just fine.
Okay.
And as long as you spend it by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, should be good, say?
Okay.
So it has to be used for salary?
It does not have to be, but if you obligate it for that, then.
It's obligated for that, okay.
You have it obligated. Basically, what that would do would allow you to pay those expenses, which would be normally paid by your, either your utility B, your utility income, or your fees coming into city, and then you're able to put that money back into your own reserve then, instead of having, spending the ARPA money to reimburse it for that. So I think that's a good approach. Gets you some good money in your bank account to, to settle.
When I spoke with Lisa?
Yes.
Um, I asked her, well, what if we haven't decided what we wanted to do with the, with the remaining balance? And she suggested, and that's why, um, he's here tonight, is to use it for salary expenses if we were not decided on what we wanted to, to use it on. Um, I just asked Mr. Kendall if we can obviously decide under number nine if we wanted, what we wanted to spend it on. He said we can, so.
Okay. Cause I know at the last meeting, we discussed getting a roll-off truck.
Yes.
To use. So would we rather do?
And that's a perfectly acceptable expense as well. If you did the roll-off truck and did the balance of it to the other, would be a perfectly, I know that's on your agenda a little bit later, but you could still use the balance if you approved the roll-off.
This will cover us for both.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. And that's what we need to do by December the thirty-first.
So when we make a motion and word it, Corey, I mean, I know as long as we all agree on it, we will make a motion to purchase a roll-off truck, and any excess ARPA funds will be put into, used for payroll? Is that how we need to motion that to make sure it's done accurately for y'all?
Yeah.
And acceptable that way?
Yeah, it sounds acceptable to me. I would put those into purchase orders once you find, finalize those numbers a little bit more, so that you have a, have a good number to put in there.
Okay. Is there any questions, discussions? Are we still on?
I'm still.
Okay. So we will make a motion to approve the remainder of the A, or ARPA funds to be used for a roll-off truck, and any remainder to be moved to be used for, uh, payrolls and expenses. Call for vote?
Any second.
Oh, second, sorry. You guys have a second?
I'll second.
Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come and talk to us about it.
No problem.
Alright. Item number ten, discussion of possible action to approve resolution twenty-two-four twelve oh five dash two, calling for the Greer County Election Board to hold the election of the City of Mangum on April first, twenty-twenty-five, and all candidates may file from eight AM on February third until five PM on February the fifth.
Well, we all know that the election is coming up, and they need, the county needs the resolution this month, um, so that's why that's on, on there.
Motion and second to approve the resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution twenty-four dash, uh, twelve oh five oh two. Calling the Greer County Election Board to hold the election for the City of Mangum on April first.
I'll second. Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
I've got too many hats. I don't know what I'm doing right now. Okay. Item number eleven, discussion of possible action to approve Mangum Fire Department to apply for a grant with Oklahoma Department of Agriculture, Food and Forestry in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Okay. So, I spoke to Irma earlier, and I believe it's worded wrong on the agenda. It's gonna, it's more, it's supposed to be more than five thousand dollars. Um, the Oklahoma Forestry Department, the state gave them, I wanna say they told me sixty-two and a half million dollars, somewhere right in there, um, for them to give out to different fire departments throughout the state. This grant is open until all the funds are gone. Um, if we're approved, it don't cost us nothing to apply to, nothing. It's just, here's the money. We are looking at replacing the old engine that we have for structured fires. It does not meet the requirements for anything. And we're gonna request three hundred thousand for a newer engine. A brand-new engine is six hundred thousand and up, and there's a twenty, twenty-four month waiting period on delivery. So this won't be a, if approved, it wouldn't be for a brand-new one, but new to us truck. That'll last another twenty-five years.
So Corey, is there anything that we can do since it says four, five thousand? And he says they're applying for more.
What's your, when's your deadline?
The funds, just until the funds run out.
I would pass it. Is what I would do. I'm gonna just, yeah, you know, I'll take action. I'm not just doing a jig there.
Okay.
But allow them to apply?
Well.
Did the atta, we put the attachment in the, it's in.
The attachment's in the package.
Yeah.
I, I would feel more comfortable if we just put it back on the agenda in January. This is not deadline on it, and then we can just omit everything after, and forestry, so we don't have, we'll leave the map blank. Like, we won't fit in, we'll just apply for the grant.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, okay. And, I mean, the longer, I mean, I will say, the longer we wait, the money may not be there.
The funds you're gonna go.
So.
Alright, so number eleven is no action. Item number twelve, discussion of possible action to correct the city's December holiday schedule that was approved in December of twenty-twenty-three.
So last year, there was two calendars that were, um, presented and created, and we adopted the wrong days, uh, in our open meeting and in our actual calendar. But then we have another calendar that's got the days that we tried to follow with the county, um, cause we mentioned that last year, we were gonna close when the county was closed. So I just need to change the days of being, um, our holiday, we had it down at Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and it should've been Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, so, to follow the county, so I need to make that correction.
I'll make a motion to, um, take action on the, uh, city's December holiday schedule.
Second.
I'll second.
Call for vote? Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Item number thirteen, discussion of possible action to open bids for the purchase of a roll-off truck with the city's payroll salary expenses or the city's ARPA fund balance.
Y'all should have a bid sheet, everybody. Of course, this is, what, five different trucks here? Uh, they're hard to find, especially new ones, but the ones that are, you can see the one that's got the lowest bid in Tampa, Florida.
Do you want anything from Tampa right now? I mean, it was just underwater.
Well, the wife and I could go down for a little vacation.
There you go. And drive a truck, or a roll-off truck back? That sounds super romantic.
Right. So anyway, I guess I'm just taking permission to lock one of these down if we can tonight. I don't know how that works, but.
We've already approved the purchase.
It's been approved for purchase, but, I mean, the funds are now there to do it. And if y'all have any input on, the two lowest bids is the Freightliner and the Peterbilt. And I think that Freightliner, uh, if I go get it, like I did the other truck, it's gonna save us another four grand, so it's actually two twenty-four. That's including the freight for them bringing it.
And those can be won to get the places in the city, Peterbilt and Freightliner in the city?
Now, the guy in Florida with the Freightliner said that the bed that they have on theirs is actually, he, you know how salesmen talk, especially on the phone. I mean, I have to go see it myself, but they're supposed to make the bed so much better and this and that, anyway.
Hello? Give them permission to go ahead and make the motion to purchase it.
I'll make the motion for the city to go ahead and purchase the, uh, roll-off, uh, truck for the City of Mangum. I'll second it.
Vote? Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Number fourteen, discussion of possible action to approve the Mangum Police Department to apply for a grant with AEDG grant in the amount of thirteen hundred.
Good evening, Ken. Um, the plan behind this is, our EMS has turned it in a corner, and yes, they are getting better, uh, but our plan is, is generally, we can beat them to a call. And if there's somebody that's having a heart attack, and we have one of these devices in each one of our vehicles, then we can possibly save a life. Uh, not just on calls, but just in general, if anything's happening, if somebody's having one of these. It doesn't say how many we can and can't have, so, you know, I, I asked for four, I requested for four, and we'll see what, what we get from there.
Is there any training that goes with these? Does it get approved for these devices? Training?
Training.
Is there training that goes?
There is some training. Uh, it's minimal, and they come also with, uh, like, you break it open, and it tells you what to do step by step.
It's like an empty pen?
So it's almost meat proof.
You gonna do it?
Um, hello. Uh, I approve, uh, I make a motion to approve the Mangum Police Department to apply for the grant, for the AED grant, in the amount of thirteen hundred dollars. I second it.
Call for vote? Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, discussion of possible action to approve the Mangum Police Department to apply for a twenty-twenty-five Safe Oklahoma Grant with the Office of the Attorney General in the amount of twenty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents. Officer Olson?
Hello, everyone. I'm gonna try and avoid this hot mic too much. So, the Oklahoma Attorney General's office has, uh, a program put together. We applied to get, uh, body cameras replacing all of ours. Chiefs walk around with the, oh, current ones we have that are falling apart, batteries are expanding. We literally can't put those on our bodies anymore. Uh, I was lucky enough to find, uh, a few of the old, uh, eleven-year-old Axon body cameras that we used to have, uh, over a decade ago, and that's who we're applying to get these through also. The Axon body cameras come with a five-year setup. They actually have halfway through it, we get brand-new units. It's covered, there's no extra expenses. The grant is approved for everything. It covers all the five years after that. After that point, there is a, you know, a maintenance carry-on fee, but we can easily go through another grant on it. It's commonly done with them, and they're, the, when I talk to the OAG, they're more than happy to keep doing that thing that we're doing, so. The amount of it would be for twenty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars, it'll come from them. They cover a hundred percent of it. There's nothing out of pocket from the police department. It just gets us online with a much better camera system that's up to date and offers a lot of bonuses.
You can't spend any of it until the first?
Yes. Nothing gets spent until the first of the new year, which is absolutely fine. I've already coordinated everything out with Axon. They, nothing gets billed, nothing happens. It just kinda, we get approved, we wait for it, and then on the first, we can move paperwork, probably the second. Remove paperwork, kinda all that, and get things in the action, and we should, things all line out and follow up, I should be having body cameras for everybody by February.
Other thing is how these, these new cameras, how they'll be able to download stuff, you know, less likely to lose data.
Yeah, it's a superior evidence system. Um, it's up to par with the state level that they expect from everybody. OSBI loves Axon. They work directly with them. Every, uh, when you walk into the building, it automatically links up to the Wi-Fi system, uploads it. It saves a lot of time for the officers. We can actually view body cameras on scene if we have somebody. If we have, um, for a scenario, if a parent or a person says, that's not what happened, and we're standing on scene, I can pull it up on my phone and go, this is my body camera right now from five minutes ago. If they wanna argue, there's been a thing with, you know, integrity. Uh, you wanna prove that, yeah, this is how I found it, your body camera can be viewed immediately. Um, if there is a concern, you can automatically send it immediately via cellular data to the, uh, city, and it's restored and saved on the server here too, so. It runs a lot better. If there's a GPS, if there's an emergency button, if the officer pushes a button, he's in a high-stress situation, but doesn't really know how to come across the radio and escalate it further, it literally has an emergency button. It contacts us directly on our cell phones and dispatch, runs a live feed directly to our phones and to dispatch, so they can watch what's happening, and we can work from that point. If the officer goes down, it has, it actually detects the fall of a person, it will automatically kick on the GPS and notify everybody where that officer down at, so. It's just a supreme system for what we're being blessed with.
Yes, absolutely.
Any questions for anybody?
No, but you can go ahead and stay there, cause staff and board remarks is next, so you're not having to get up against someone tonight.
I make a motion for, uh, to approve the Mangum Police Department to apply for the twenty-twenty-five Safe Oklahoma Grant. I second it.
Call for vote? Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Yes.
Staff and board remarks.
Okay, I'm already ready. What do you know? No, I'm actually, uh, next month, I'm putting together some materials on all that. One of the things I do is I'm also an instructor for CLEAT, CLEAT's for the Fight Instructor, and I'm gonna start teaching my men some more self-defense tactics in fighting. The biggest thing on that is, I'm in my forties, much less, you know, the younger one maybe, but the rest of us are kinda old. And so I would like to get some, uh, mats that we can use. I've got a place that we can use them now. They're, they're two inches thick, they're used for jiu-jitsu, but it's commonly used for throwing down, and it kinda, it minimizes the risk of injury. I can be fine. I've trained forever. I know how to throw somebody or train somebody without injury. But when you introduce new people to the, the sport, to the martial arts of it, you have to be careful, and that's just a very simple precaution. I'll have, uh, finalized pricing on it. Also have some training, but a dummy. Those are fairly inexpensive for what we're doing, but it helps them train in how to mount, guard, and how to take custody and control of a person, which is the most dangerous part of our job, is when somebody wants to fight the police. So this would give us an opportunity to kinda train better. Um, I should be able to give them CLEAT credits in the training as soon as they get approved by CLEAT, and so. Just the opportunity to go look into it, see how much it's gonna cost, and, and move forward with that would be fantastic.
Sounds good, man. Sounds good. Go. Go, she said. Get out of here.
Once again, uh, the last two weeks, we've had five, uh, basically sexual assault crimes, uh, with, with children. So in an effort to improve our ability to do these investigations, uh, we reached out to OSBI and, uh, want to be partners in the Internet Crimes Against Children to where we can actually start the investigations here and not have to wait on them. That's gonna open up the ability for us to have, uh, the, the computer devices and stuff. We will have to purchase the computer at first, but OSBI will reimburse us completely. The reason why is, they don't want to issue it, so they won't have to come down here and inventory it, okay? Uh, and they'll give us the training that's required next month. Uh, there's two days of training in Lawton, and, uh, we can go to, and they'll teach you how to forensically do these, this training and these investigations that, that we're already doing. We just might as well do it better. So just letting you know that we're just gonna try to get an agreement with them and have them supplement us through ICAC.
Good, good, good. Good, Neil. Yes. And, okay. Any other staff and board remarks? Anybody?
Yes, I wanna say that, uh, thanks for my guys coming in and supporting me, because that's very important that they're here. I'm thankful that they're here. And, um, I also, I don't know if I should put this in our new business, but, um, I am going to be reviewing, uh, if we get a court clerk or deputy court clerk. And, um, I also, I don't know if I should put this under new business, but, um, I am going to be reviewing, uh, if we get a court clerk or deputy court clerk, um, to help out in that area. I feel like it's falling apart a little bit, or a third-party payroll. So either one of those, I'm gonna look into and try to get that done. And we, we'll have it on the agenda next month. So, uh, but then I also wanna say, I don't know where we came up with this five thousand dollars on the fire department, but I don't want them to lose out on applying for this. So, we need to set up a special meeting or something to approve them.
Yes.
Just real quick or something, because I don't, I, I don't even know where we got this number, I don't. I'm gonna start making it to where I don't get in here and create these agendas anymore, so that way we don't have error. So, I apologize to these guys, I don't, I don't really even know where we got this, where this number came from. So we need to.
What?
A special meeting put together for them.
What day is the Christmas party?
The twentieth.
We have to put it on the agenda anyways, to do a meeting, so let's add it. Would that be quick enough? I mean, the twentieth, that's a week and a half, you think that's gonna make?
It's just a week and a half.
You think that'll work?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm afraid another month is, I, that's a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money when you spread it across the whole state.
Right, yeah.
So.
Well, we'll, we'll put it on for, in the morning before we have our meeting over there at the.
Okay, yeah, that'll work, and we'll just, that's an easy fix.
By the way, it's the twentieth, I think I told, uh, I don't think I got to tell you yet, but it is the twentieth in the other building. And Commissioner Chapman, I'll send him an email and let him know it's the twentieth as well.
Okay. So, new business? That wasn't really new business, was it?
I think that's it.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Hugby.
Yes.
All right. Are you ready? Are you willing to go? Okay, go ahead, me. Call meeting to order, please.
Chapman? Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Hugby?
Yes.
Manasco?
Just motion to approve the consent agenda.
Uh, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
Call for vote. Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Hugby.
Yes.
Remarks and inquiries from the audience not pertaining to the agenda. I'm like, are you raising your hand?
I'll show them, stay seated.
Okay. Item number five, discussion and possible action to renew lease twen- or two oh six six forty-one with Oklahoma Commissioners of the Land Office for the coronation site located in Willow.
I'm gonna let, uh, our superintendent speak on this.
That, that is state land. The state, there are certain numbers on the lot, you know, sections that it stated that they kept. And those certain lands go, numbers go to certain places. I was told that money goes to Langston University. But so, it's there, and we, no one can ever own it, so you have to pay rent on it, and that's where our coronator is sitting, on that land.
And it's a three-year, uh, contract, uh, we talked about it today, um, this afternoon, and I think the total is forty-two hundred for the three years. And we've done it for.
Two and O.
For a long time.
Seven years.
Yeah.
Seventy-five hours, but it's wrong.
So they sent us the, the, uh, I think it increased by like, two, three hundred dollars, and so that's, and it's up, so that's what that is for.
I'll make the motion to, um, renew the lease, number two zero six six four one.
I second it.
Call for vote. Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Hugby.
Yes.
Item number six, discussion and possible action to correct the NUA's December holiday schedule for the approval of December twenty twenty-three.
That is the same as, I have to correct both sides.
I'll make the motion to approve or correct the NUA December holiday schedule.
I second it.
Call for vote. Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Hugby.
Yes.
All right, item number seven is discussion and possible action to receive bids for the city's water tower ladder to be repaired in order to complete the inspection. I don't like that look.
Last month, y'all, uh, we were okay getting the towers inspected for sixty-three hundred, I believe it was. Well, when I sent that request in, they sent me a report back that said that the elevated tower here never was inspected in two thousand fifteen because there was no ladder access to the top, which I didn't know at that time. So I've been trying to get prices on that, and I gave y'all a bunch of stuff on your table there. We've got one company that said they'll come in and do a temporary repair on the ladder and go ahead and inspect the tank, and then inspect the other two tanks, even cheaper than what we got on the last bid. And we've got one bid in here for like fourteen or eighteen grand, just to repair the ladder, not, no inspections. So, I mean, I give you several of them. I wanna go with this tank spec. Here's a sample report going past the ground, the one they've done. It will give the ladder temporary repairs and all of our, uh, water towers inspected. Uh, I showed, uh, Ms. Judith a while ago, but. Here's a report back in two thousand fifteen, and this is the ladder held up by a bandit. You got a picture of this, black and white, so you know. So there's not gonna be anybody gonna get on that tower with any kind of bid without it being repaired first, so. And those pictures are in black and white there, the condition of the tower back in two thousand fifteen. If you wanna see the colored photos, I can get them to you to look at all the rust and.
I can see it.
But there's several bids, like I say, from different companies, one of them even has a bid for the repainting of it, which, that's a future project, you see, like, three hundred grand. I guess basically what I wanna do, if it's possible, is to get, uh, this tank spec to come in and do this temporary ladder repair and inspect our three tanks for twenty-three hundred for the ladder repair and forty-four seventy for the inspection, which is six, seven, sixty-seven hundred dollars, seventy, sixty hun- sixty-seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Which is still cheap.
Which I'm just changing from last month's meeting, from a different company.
We do have that in the Water Department.
But, yeah, 'cause we have to, they, we're passed due on inspection, right?
But we have that in our budget.
Right.
We put a little bit of extra, we knew some of those things were gonna come up, we put that in our budget.
Apparently further behind than we thought we were.
Well, yeah, we didn't get inspected, inspected as well.
Yeah. But nobody wants to come with the ladder, and it's.
So I'll make a motion for you to accept the best bid to get the towers inspected and fixed.
Call for vote. Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Hugby?
Yes.
Staff and board remarks.
I'm back.
That would be under the new business, I think, on yours.
Oh, well, great. New business?
No, you can, right, you said you can, okay, you can.
Listen, just stay up there. We'll go through each item.
Okay, first of all, uh, the Water Department, they've got a chlorine tester that, uh, is now pretty much obsolete, it's throwing off different, how you say that, Michael?
Different readings.
Different readings for, you can read the same stuff twice and it not be the same. It needs to be recalibrated.
In four months, it will not recalibrate, and it will not work on it.
So we're looking at a machine that's fixing to be obsolete in a month, so we don't, I don't feel necessary to have it recalibrated. And I put before you some, uh, I think I did, the cost of the machine and the, uh, another tester, which is gonna amount to nine thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. And this chlorine test, if I'm not mistaken, is the E two.
Yes.
Yeah.
Could we use, what's the, can we make our ARPAs to purchase that?
We, well, we are allowed to use our ARPA funds if, I mean, we need so.
You couldn't obligate it to, I don't know if you have, how you're choosing, if you have the ability to, to obligate them with this or not.
We have it in our budget, we went over that before we came in here, they have it in their budget.
Okay.
Really, the, the difference would be, if you're paying up, paying payers, like, you're gonna put money in there anyway, so it's kinda, kinda gonna wash you.
Right, yeah.
Still putting money into that account.
So since it's under new business, do we make a motion to approve that? I'll make a motion to approve for Steve to purchase a new, however you say this, spectrometer.
Tank spec photometer, whatever, say it real fast three times. Now, there is two parts to that, I don't know if y'all seen that, I'll make sure that all that's cleared. There's another little test down there that's.
Yeah, 'cause you said ninety, whatever, yeah, gotcha. Okay, call for vote.
Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Hugby?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, he's not, sorry, I'm sorry. Just came back in session.
Uh, we also have a problem on our water line up here at the river. Uh, when the river got out of banks, what, two, three weeks ago, it moved our water line and pulled it apart to where it was leaking bad. And the, what, going across rivers is a black pipe, it's not metal, but it, uh, connects into metal pipe, and the connector come loose. So, we've got a meter, or not a meter, but a valve, four hundred feet up in a field to, uh, I wanna put black pipe from there to that valve, that'll keep that river from washing that out. Plus, we're gonna call a bunch of concrete down there and help support that pipe. But you're talking about four hundred feet, ah, eleven hundred per forty feet, so you're looking at seven thousand dollars just for the pipe. Them coming down, and it, actually, it's plastic pipe, it gets welded together, gets heated on each side and welded together, if I'm saying that right?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, fused together.
HDP, five inches, all eight-year thing, and they guarantee it for a long time.
They said, and I hadn't talked to the people yet, but Harold and somebody else told me, they said they guaranteed it for a hundred years not to come apart, so.
Okay.
Uh, that's what I'm wanting to eventually get a lot of our lines redone with, and I'm trying.
Is this the same one, Chris, that when we got all that rain last time that washed out, they had to send the diver, whatever, out there when we got all that rain, was that the same one? That came once?
Which one you talking about?
When the lake filled up, and it washed all that out, and you guys had to get, nobody could get in it to fix it, because there was so much water.
Well, that's kinda what we're, yeah, right now.
It's the same, okay.
Same thing, that washed out, and that's what brought that on. And we had this same company come in, and we put, I don't remember how many feet we put in, but it went to that South Bank, which was off the South Bank, and we thought it was good from then on. And then the river washed into that, made a little coal thing in there and broke it loose. So we won't way away from the riverbanks, so it'll never happen again. It won't, we, we couldn't tell where the break was this time, we knew we had a break, and we were losing a bunch of water, 'cause that tower was emptying out. So we figured it had to be in there, 'cause we looked everywhere, and there was nothing else, and sure enough, it was. And I didn't, we didn't figure that that pipe, because that pipe is tough, it's not on break.
Yeah.
We were right, it was the connection.
So at the very least, I, we need to get at least two joints of pipe to go out of the river and get it out of where it won't become part again, but to me, the sensible thing to do is go ahead and go to the valve. And when we do repairs like this, not just to repair and patch where it's at, but try to get a section of line done, I'd like to get more than four hundred feet, but it is what it is. And it's gonna cost, by the time you get the fusion machine down here and the labor and all that, it's gonna cost close to thirteen to fifteen grand.
It's actually cheaper.
It's not too bad.
So, that's all I've got.
He's like, I'm sitting down on that note.
Like we talked about, uh, I, I recap with the guys as often as we, we can get together, but we've, so many years, we've kind of just patched things up. And we have to get away from that, and I know that we can't do it all at once, but we need to start somewhere.
That's why we're kinda wanting to replace this to the valve, 'cause we got a lot of patches north of the river, and we got that blocked up, we're blowing the pipe, we just had it leak last week, for us shutting that valve off, and it's blowing our patches out.
It sounds like a lot right now, but we probably pay that in just calling them out, working at night in overtime, that they're having to go every time that happens. They had fifty-five thousand dollars in their account, I think it was down to thirty when we came in here, but we had it, we had it for extra, and then today I asked where they were paying some things out of, and so we, we've got some, it's probably gonna eat it all up, but.
Okay.
It worked.
Okay. Well, I mean, it sounds like, 'cause what's it gonna cost to band-aid it again? Couple thousand, probably?
We went out today, we're gonna try to put it back together, just right there in Temperance, and we got the approval, and put a new cover on it, which was thirty-one dollars. And, uh, we actually had to get running match out there to help us, 'cause it was in the river. And when we got it pulled apart and looking at it, that pipe on the end of it, where that's clamped on and scarred up, if we cut it off, it's gonna make it too short to come in. So we're kinda, we're either gonna have to fuse some more pipe or add something there, I mean, a temporary patch or something.
And you're still at the back of the river.
Yeah.
And we don't wanna band-aid it.
No.
We don't wanna band-aid it.
We need to get out of doing that.
We do not wanna band-aid it.
So, well, since we don't have an amount.
We don't have an amount?
Well, not exactly, he said between.
Well, like I say, it was, uh, we did four hundred feet, which is, uh. What, ten sticks, 'cause it's forty feet length, it's at eleven hundred dollars, be eleven thousand, eleven, one hundred and ten dollars for the pipe. It's ninety dollars an hour for them to come fuse it, and that's when they leave their place, which is four hour, you know, travel time. So, you're looking at, if we do it eight, if it's eight hours, I don't know, it may be ten hours, but you're looking at seven hundred and twenty dollars for their labor, and two hundred and twenty-five a day for the machine, and it could take sixteen hours, I don't know. I mean, I shot the high while ago when I told you, 'cause I wanna make sure that I cover everything. But right now, looking at that, you're looking at the very least twelve thousand five hundred, at the very least.
I will say, though, that we have the, we're not transferring the money for the dispatch, so there's still that.
Right, but we still have that, too.
Yeah.
Since you don't really know the amount, but as long as, but the money's in that department.
Can we do up to?
What you would do is you need to authorize them to go ahead and do the repair as proposed, and then you'll do a budget amendment later to get it and move money to repairs and materials to make up for it. That's what I would suggest you do, 'cause we're not really exceeding any money that, because, that they already have, they already have the money, they, in their account, it's just not in the right bucket.
Right.
So you're gonna authorize them to do the repairs, and then you'll do a budget amendment to get it in the right bucket.
Okay, well, we'll make a motion to authorize Steve, whoever, all of you guys to make the repairs, and then amend the budget at the next.
I'll second it.
Call for vote. Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Hugby?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Everybody's done, right?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Peterson?
Yes.
McCaslin?
Yes.
Hugby?
Yes.